Okay, welcome to meeting. The meeting is for public. Public may address the board at this time. And also will be time for the end of the meeting. Okay, minutes of previous meeting of August 19th. Are there any errors or missions and corrections?
Make a motion to adjourn the minutes.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bills. Do you have anything else?
No additions, no deletions.
Okay, board have any comments on the bills?
Make a motion to adjourn the bills.
Excuse me, okay. Need a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, all right. Correspondence, that's the Clark three correspondence.
We have several this evening. The first one is from Brian Pelkey. Dear Mayor, Board, coworkers, and residents, please accept this letter as my official notification that I plan to retire from my position as Public Works Supervisor with the Village of Rouse's Point. According to section 19-16 of the Village Code, I am giving the board three months notice of my intent to retire. My last day with the village will be Friday, November 29th, 2019. I am excited to start the next chapter of my life, but I want to take this opportunity to thank my coworkers and village residents. I have had the pleasure of working with great people. Thank you for all the opportunities and experiences. I have grown both personally and professionally, and it has made me into the person I am today. I sincerely appreciate the support provided to me during my 36 years of employment. I have lived in the village my whole life, and it will always hold a special place in my heart. Please let me know if I can be of any assistance during this transition. Sincerely, Brian S. Pelkey.
Okay, board's pleasure on this.
I make a motion to adjourn the bill.
I make a motion to adjourn the bill. Any regrets?
Second.
Any regrets?
No regrets.
Okay, and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Brian.
Next, we have a letter from Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder. Dear Mayor and trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months. Destin Stellar of Pratt Street. Please act on this member, and we thank you for your time in this matter. Respectfully yours, Dennis Roberts.
Okay, what's board's pleasure?
Make a motion to adjourn the new person to the fire department?
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Next, we have a letter from Assemblyman Billy Jones. Dear Mayor of Batha, in response to your correspondence dated June 4th, I have reached out to my council in Albany as well as our real property analyst. Both parties have concluded that no changes were made at the state level regarding property tax valuations. I have included a detailed explanation of the real property analyst and hope this clears up any questions you may have. If you would like to discuss this further, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for contacting me, and please feel free to do so at any time. My door is open. Sincerely, Billy Jones, Member of Assembly.
Okay, this was an inquiry we sent in, asked a couple of months ago. It kind of contradicts what the real property tax people in Plattsburgh told us. There's their analysis of it.
And that's all I have.
All right, any comments on the letter? Next thing I have is the EMS contract, authorization to sign this. This is, we had the village attorney look it over. It's about the same as last year's, except that it's increased by $7,000, which we knew when we bought, actually already paid for it. It's a $7,000 increase over last year's. So, I'll move that to the floor.
I make a motion to adjourn it?
No, authorization to sign.
Or sign, sorry. Authorization to sign this contract, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, I have a contract with the Northern Border Regional Commission. This is another one, authorization to sign this. It's, this is for the $500,000 grant for extending streets in the old Pfizer property and acquiring land, if necessary, for a water plant facility. We haven't determined the location of that yet because we're waiting for the report from Barton and Judas. So, it's not etched in stone that it's going to be up there yet, but this is preliminary to that. This was the one that was under very short notice to acquire this grant.
Oh, yeah.
Like 11 days to put in for it, and we had...
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement?
And then second?
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I request an executive session to discuss issues pursuant to the Taylor law. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I need a second executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Update on the playground equipment. The playground equipment has been installed. It has been very warmly received by just about everybody. It has a tenure guarantee on it. The slides, the slides, two of the slides are guaranteed for five years, and four of them are guaranteed for three years, or vice versa, because they're made by some other company that doesn't use these guys. They also, you know, cost us, filled in with the mulch under the swing sets. And I'd like to point out that that mulch stuff is not regular mulch. It's not treated with any chemicals. It's ADA compliant. As it packs down, you supposedly be able to get wheelchairs over. Well, I don't know what purpose that would be.
You can.
But what it is, it's made out of ground-up tree roots. And tree roots don't rot like the top of a tree wood. So, that's why they use these. They're special, come from only a couple of places that supply it. This came out of Watertown, I believe. But anyways.
How often do you got to put that in there? Every other year?
No, I don't think so. He says we have to, three or four years. You have to manicure it, you know, like rake it out once a week. I've told him for this year till the end of this season, I want him to do it Monday and Friday. Do it twice a week to keep it all, you know, leveled off, and so it doesn't start getting kicked over the edge of the perimeter. And it's going to pack down. And then we'll see how it goes from there.
How often do the school put theirs in?
They don't use this kind of stuff. They have rubber, don't they?
No.
They have to use wood.
With mulch.
Regular mulch.
Usually every year.
And you get a lot more kids, too.
You get a lot more kids. Then, we just put it down like this, get kids to camp in it. Maybe off school, there was some riding bikes.
Anyway, there will be a dedication ceremony on this on Friday at 10:00 a.m. Assemblyman Jones will be there, a few other people. Need to add the procurement policy. Dan Yankee, permanent rec center employee. Need to add him to the list where he can sign for things like at the hardware store and everything. Need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, I move that need be added to the procurement policy. Second, by Trusty Arno. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Zoning Board of Appeals. As you know, we've finally got the dust cleared on this, settled on the membership of it. They've worked it all out. So, we need to appoint everybody tonight. It's, Pat Burkett is the chair, five years. Chuck Rouse, Vice Chair, for four years. Mike Casey and Shirley Hall are two-year appointments. Mike Mumley and Karen Thon are three years, and Junior Moore is four years. Alternates Pam Gadway and Sonia, who you are two years each. So, I'd like to move that to the floor for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, just to know, they have seven members on the board now?
Yeah, they have seven.
Two alternates.
And two alternates. We got away from that one. One-year appointment stuff, too. Because otherwise, we're staggering it so that not everybody comes, you know, expires all at the same time. But on the other hand, there's no sense in me doing it every year if you don't have to. So, anyway, that streamlined things a little bit. That's all I have for now. Trusty Arno? All right, I've got a few things. Did we, when we sent out for advertising for line supervisor or superintendent, did we put this in News &amp; News?
We put something in News &amp; News, didn't we?
We did. We didn't put it in News &amp; News because the employees don't get that. It just goes to board members and to only some department heads. So, employees don't get it. So, there's really...
Well, I know here, here they got a chief line worker for the Village of Pan Yen. They got a senior line worker for the Village of Pan Yen. They got electric superintendent for the Village of Skimmy Atlas.
We haven't advertised. We have not advertised for the line supervisor position.
No, the other line workers we did.
The chief line worker.
Okay.
Yeah. But the board hasn't decided yet on a line supervisor or a chief.
Now, with Mr. Pelkey's retirement, I think we need to start advertising.
Yeah, quite a bit.
We should, yeah, everywhere.
Yeah, all over the place.
I would like to make a motion that we advertise in the Trust Republican, and I'd like to advertise in the Burlington also.
Burlington or Syracuse paper or something.
I need to know what position and the salary that you want to advertise at. You can...
Why don't we discuss that in the executive session, and then we come back and decide which, you know, we're offering and stuff.
Yeah, we got to look into this.
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of it tonight. Okay. And just to let you know that we do have money in the budget for Academy Street. We do have $5,780. Or $5,280, sorry. As you said last...
I know that.
Yeah, but I asked you last meeting, and you said we didn't have the money. We'll have to put the money in the budget for next year?
No. No, we'd have to put it in next year because it's not getting done this year.
Oh, boy, must have understood you. Well, anyhow, it's in the budget.
We don't want to put it in.
Okay.
Whole streets.
Okay. I didn't get a chance to talk to, or make any phone calls for the clock. I've been too busy. So, anyhow, I'll bring that up again next month, or next meeting, they should say, for the village clock, okay? And the speed sign that was on Smith Street and on Montgomery Street, I never see it work.
More of that. I talked to, I talked to, I helped Sergeant Dominy set it up. They chose the places where they wanted to put it. One on Montgomery Street. It only works when you get to the street light about 20 feet in front of it, and then it flashes on. You're going 18 or something, and then that's it. Completely doesn't work the way it's supposed to.
Well, that ain't very good sign then.
No, it isn't. And I told, I told him last week when he was here, and he was going to look into it, maybe bring the other one that they have. They have two of them. And he's on vacation this week. I talked to Deputy Scott Bechar today, and he said it wasn't any of his problem. Called somebody who cares. Basically what he told me in the police station this afternoon. So, I said I would do that. I said I'm asking him to relay the message that it doesn't work and get somebody up here to fix it.
Yeah. Well, I know two people, I talked to two people on Smith Street, and they said...
It didn't work out there. I tested it. I drove through it. It didn't go on. I know that.
Well, then I drove through it last, the other night when it was on Montgomery Street. I drove through about 40 miles an hour because I figured you'd have to go over the speed limit for it to work, and it didn't come on. And I drove through at 20 miles an hour, and it didn't come on. And I said, well, that ain't no good. No sense of even it there.
No, I brought my battery tester up. We tested all the batteries. It's got six-volt batteries in it. They're all at like 6.4 volts or so. Which is about like the batteries dead. Well, how much is a six-volt battery supposed to have in it? Seven, is it, or six and a half?
Well, it all depends how many...
They're all hooked up in series. There's like, I don't know, there's like maybe eight of them in there?
Well, one could be dead and go in there.
I tested all of them.
But you can't do that. You got to unhook one individual.
They're all different readings and stuff. Anyhow, okay. But anyways, they think it's the sensors wrong. It's the part where the radar comes out.
Yeah. Okay, now I got one question here on this PLM study. In here, the PLM study says creating a load applies for each other spot load scenario tested based case on four megawatts and the spot load test for 12-megawatt load. Now, what is that all for? Give me a second. Did you get one of these, Bill?
No.
Did you get one? Everybody's got that, I think. That came out about a week...
It was previous meetings. It wasn't for this meeting. It was prior.
We had it at a different meeting, right? We did? Anyway, what they did is they constructed a couple of... Here, you want that one? Look at it. A second here. No, I know what it is. What they did is they just did a couple of, like, guesses. But, you know, like, how much would the rates be affected if it was this much load increase? How much would the rates be affected if it was more increased? That's what this is for. Oh, so that's not for Wyatt or something? But one of them... No, it's for if anybody... This is what the effect would be. No, nobody's coming in for that. This is a hypothetical example of what the rates would be with different loads added back onto it. And he's supposed to come, and this is just a bill for it. This is the engineering study. This is just a bill for it. Well, that's what I say. No, we got the whole study, the one... I never seen it. I haven't seen it. Make sure everybody has a copy of it, Don. He's going to, the PLM guy wants to meet with us at some point and go over this with us.
Probably a good idea.
Well, we're going to. It doesn't affect anything now because nothing's up there. I mean, we got this back in June of 18? Or is that when you sent it out? Or July of 18, since the bill came? Probably that study's been here for about a month, maybe? I don't know.
I don't have it with me, so I don't know if it's up in my hand.
But it's, nothing is, it's not like two or three people want to come in, and this is what it's going to cost if we put them on. It isn't anything like that. It's hypothetical studies of load usages and how they would affect the rates.
Okay. All right, well, I'd like to see all the board...
We can get a much more detailed explanation pretty soon.
Okay, well, I'd like to see all the board get a copy of this.
I'm sorry, I thought that everybody did it. All right. The other thing, what about the shore study? What are we going to do with that? Or what are we doing? We got another leak in that shore pipe. We're looking for funding to replace it.
I thought we already had it, no?
Huh?
I thought we already had the funding for that.
No, we don't.
I thought Peter would do a study on that, or whatever.
No, he hasn't done a study. He's looking for funding for it. We haven't got any specs or anything. I think he's done a little preliminary work. All right. I'll ask him Friday. He'll be here Friday for the dedication. Okay. Mr. Pelkey, did you look into the IEP thing for the fire department?
I asked Damon Menard to give us a second quote. I haven't received it yet. I met with him. We went through the whole building, measured everything, window sizes. He calculated all the BTUs. I'm just waiting for him to drop the quote off to the village office.
Oh, okay. I had discussions with the fire chief on that the next day after you brought that up the last meeting. He explained it all to me. It's going, roughly in about the $6,000 to $7,000 ballpark, Brian. And we've got money in IEP to cover that. And I reviewed how to get it paid for. We don't want to have them come up and look at it. I did a certified, have paid. Okay. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Pelkey for getting them lights from Wyatt, them blinking lights. There's a set on Maple Street already that's working. And he's got some signs come and said, school, school...
School zone, 20 miles an hour.
Stuff like that. I think it's very nice of Mr. Pelkey and the electric crew to put them in. And we got another set for Montgomery Street. I'd like to see them put in by the boatyard, or by the sportsmen's down to...
Mostly for the Delagar's gate, to the...
Delagar's gate, yeah. I don't have a problem that being put in, but I think it should be at the bottom of the list of the other things that have not been put in this summer yet. There's a number of other small projects that need to be completed.
Well, I'd like to see them in, because they help out for...
But there's other things ahead of that.
They help out for speedings, speakers, especially when they see the lights.
Yeah.
And stuff. What do you guys think?
I think it should be more of them up throughout the village.
Yeah.
Those are like 25-mile zones. People do 35, 40 of them.
Right. So, I think sooner they get them in, the better. I think that they should be on the list to get done this year. I think there's some other things that should come first.
Yeah, well, whatever. I'd like to see them in. You know, that helps out, slow the traffic down. Seeing that we don't have no speed limit signs down there. Whatever.
There's speed limit signs down there.
Anyhow, so. And school is starting right away tomorrow, or Thursday, and it's nice that then the signs are up.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Okay, Trusty Dart is on vacation today this week. Trusty Menard?
The other thing I had, I wanted to thank Brian for putting those signs up also, and his crew. And when are we going to pay?
They called the county today. We have about five to six more days of prepping, and we're on their schedule to come within the next week or two. They coordinated with Champlain right now with us, and he would say that within the next 10 days, they'll be here. I'm hoping Tuesdays because they don't work Mondays.
Right.
I'm hoping they'll be here Tuesday or Wednesday, and they should be done by Friday.
Thank you. That's all I have for you.
Trusty Gadway?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, other reports. Brian, you have anything?
Yes, I brought up about an outage the last meeting on the South 1 and South 2. After looking at all the problems that we're having to switch some load over there, the South 1 feeder is about 50% loaded in the winter time. The South 2 feeder is about 75% loaded. So, what I tried to do is take some of the load and put it on the South 1 from the South 2. Unfortunately, it's a major project. There is a South 3 feeder that comes out of our substation, and it stops at the right-of-way of where Junior National Enfield used to be. That was projected to go out into that field and to take care of Beacon Heights and Smith Street to relieve some of the load, and it'd be a backup in case something happens. So, what, right now, it's still in the planning stage because if I'm going to develop that field, I talked to Willie Giroux back when they bought the field with George Rivers as mayor, and Willie Giroux said that there'd be no problem for him to give us a right-of-way to go through and connect that line over onto Smith Street or to Beacon Heights. And that should be done in the future. It should be budgeted to do the rightaways, eventually put the pipe in, and then eventually put the wire in. It's just going to help your whole system. If there's ever a problem on Smith Street[1471.74] If there's ever a problem on Smith Street or on Lower Lake, you'll be able to backfeed, and you'll have a backup, because right now, you have nothing. If you lose that line, you're going to be out of power for quite a while.
Which will also not mind power.
They're not there?
No.
Okay. I got to go. Sorry.
All right. What was it? You have a new library. The Frog is still alive, I see.
The Frog is still alive, the tree is still alive. Everything's living in the library. The farmer's market, which was originally scheduled to close on August thirtieth, is being extended for two weeks because the growing season started so late this year. So, everybody's got vegetables coming in now, so come to the farmer's market for the next two weeks. Summer program is done, and Thursday Storytime has restarted in the library. And that's about all we're doing. I'm still getting in the surveys. I'm getting a lot of really good information, good suggestions. It's going to take a long time to dig through all of the data, and of course, they're going to continue to come in for a couple of weeks. But that and the grant that I'm working for, working on for the stairs, are my two big projects when I officially get back to work on September ninth.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Code Enforcement Officer, John, you got anything?
Well, we're just, I sent a lot of letters out. We're doing pretty well on it. Actually, I think we're doing real good on it. People are actually complying pretty well. We have to talk to them a little bit, but as you can see, it looks pretty good around the village. I've had some complaints, but nothing really major, unless you guys know something I don't.
I talked to the guy that owns my rebuilding, and I asked him if there's any way possible he could cut the trees back and the bushes, even with the fence. I said up at least seven foot, so when the sidewalk cloud goes by, it won't hit the top and stuff. And he said he would have somebody do it the next day, and I seen it hasn't been done yet. So, just wondering if we could send him a letter?
Let me get, let me get with you tomorrow, and you give me a little information.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. You all? You all in the mean, the public, one last time?
Yeah, Tom.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. You, you have something else?
I was done, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
From the block, Chairman of Regional News. The PLMs done available for the public distribution?
I believe that is, I'll have to look at it. John, is that, was that confidential? It said confidential in front of it. And it's confidential at this time. Once the board goes through it, we can have a meeting with them and have them explain everything, then we'll probably open it up to the public.
Can I just clarify? You said probably open it up, because...
Well, I got to see what it is. I haven't met with the guy yet. You know, find out what the reasoning is and what they're thinking here. You know, if there's no reason to have it confidential or for, for, for it to remain confidential, then we'll, you know, we'll release it.
Well, there should be a reason that being confidential, was the study paid for by the village, it feels like...
I understand that, but we haven't had a chance to go over it with the, with the company we hired to do it.
And the timeframe for doing that?
I'd say probably in the next couple, two, three weeks, we'll get it done. Call them up this week and...
He's out of state. He's in New England, Massachusetts, so we'll have to arrange for him to come up here for a meeting.
That's fine. I just want to get a timeframe, because that's why I'm going to come back on, that's it.
Yeah.
And the second question, the playground equipment?
Mm-hmm.
How many bidders were there for that? Were sent, bid requests were sent out for that playground equipment?
We had two. We received two bids.
You think you had two bids?
I believe so. I would have to look back in my files, but I believe, I know I sent out two or three